Am I on? There. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome to our City Council meeting tonight. I'm going to call it to order, and we're going to have a roll call by our City Clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
The next thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. And tonight, it's Narice Kaufman, the member of ZerOptimus International Vista, who's going to do that for us. And after the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll remain standing, please, for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gracious God, by whatever name we call you, thank you for the privilege of leadership as well as service, and for this rich and diverse community. We know that together, citizen and civic leader alike, we have what it takes to guide and grow this city. We thank you equally for our personal and professional challenges, and the blessings and skills to meet them and prosper. Amen.
Thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is our approval of the agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. There was no closed session today, so the next thing is, here's our presentations. And the first presentation will be, hold on, it's an acknowledgement for George Solano. And I'm going to have, we're going to have an award for George. And here to present the award is Doug Nakama, Deputy Chief of Special Operations from the San Diego Fire Rescue Department. And also with him are Ned Vanderpoel, Vista Deputy Fire Chief, Ken Matsumoto, retired Oceanside Fire Division Chief, Don Shellhammer, retired Vista Deputy Fire Chief, Jerry Brewster, retired San Diego Fire Battalion Chief and Urban Search and Rescue Program Manager, Harry Muns, Chula Vista Fire Battalion Chief, Homeland Security Training Officer. And in attendance are also George's wife Laura and his kids Ryan, Adam, and Justin. So let me read this, and then I'll call everyone up. And I missed Jeff Han, who's the Vista Deputy Fire Chief. George has worked for the city since 1979, beginning his career as a maintenance worker in wastewater, to becoming the supervisor of wastewater, and now his current assignment as supervisor of fleet maintenance. George is well-known among his peers for finding creative solutions to difficult challenges, and for putting the safety of his employees first. In addition to George's public service at the City of Vista, he's also been instrumental in teaching technical urban search and rescue skills, specifically the California State Fire Marshal, confined space rescue operations, FEMA heavy rescue rigging, and FEMA structural collapse techniques to almost every firefighter in San Diego County. On September 11, 2001, George, along with the San Diego County Urban Search and Rescue Team, was called to duty to help the citizens of New York at Ground Zero. Tonight, George is being recognized by the Urban Search and Rescue Team of San Diego for his exemplary training, performance, and contributions as a team member. So with that, I'd like to call up Doug Nakama and all of the men I mentioned, Ned Vanderpoel, Ken Matsumoto, Don Shellhammer, Gary Brewster, Harry Muns, Jeff Han, sorry Jeff, it's not on this list. And George, where's George?
Where's George?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, City Council, for letting us kind of embellish one of your great employees here at City of Vista. I got a chance in the early nineties to work side by side with George as an instructor at the Southern California Rescue School in San Diego. We knew George was really special when he brought his skills as a public works employee to our rescue world. In other words, he knew how to operate the tools, he knew how to train, he knew how to maintain it, which all equated to safety operation of our skill sets. We saw this diamond rough, and so he got a chance to work with the Urban Search Rescue Team, one of 28 teams in the nation that responded to Katrina, World Trade Center, many, many other major disasters. One of the things I cherish most about George is his great character, great ethics, what he brings to the citizens of this county, and what he's brought to our team. George has a special skill set that not only blends his hands-on ability, but his leadership ability with our team. To my right are members who are current and former leaders of the Urban Search and Rescue Team, and we all recognize George's ability. I'd like to present this plaque to George. In recognition and appreciation for your selfless service to the citizens of the County of San Diego, State of California, and United States of America, as a member of California Task Force Eight, your contributions and leadership have helped forge this California Task Force Eight into an elite response team during times of national disaster. Thank you for your service and dedication to this critical response resource.
I don't think I'm going to make it, but thank you, everyone, for being here, and thank you for the support mechanism that the City of Vista provided me with the opportunity to, back in 1996, to be able to make my application, apply to the San Diego Urban Search and Rescue Team, and be accepted as a member of the Urban Search and Rescue Team, and the continued support mechanism that the City of Vista, City Council members, mayors, and all the folks that are here, my friends and family, coworkers, colleagues, professional inspirations that have all led me to spend a little bit of time in a few years on one of the greatest teams in the entire nation. And thank you so much.
Thank you. I think we're going to do a photo, so maybe all the City Council would like to go down and join these fine men that are in uniforms. have is our proclamation declaring 2013 as our 50-year golden anniversary. So do you all want to go down there one more time? Yeah, listen, come on. Okay, I'll read the proclamation, and then we have some people that are here to give us a little something, I think. So the proclamation, whereas the City of Vista is celebrating its golden anniversary, 50 years since incorporation, the City of Vista was incorporated as a general law city of 19,000 residents on January 28, 1963. When it was incorporated, the city had three fire stations and two parks, Wildwood Park and the former Recreation Park. And whereas at 50 years old, the city now boasts a population of just over 95,000, with six strategically located fire stations, and 18 parks and recreational facilities. Over the years, the city has expanded its cultural and community amenities, assuming operations of the Moonlight Amphitheater in 1984, and purchasing the historic Rancher Buena Vista adobe in 1989. And whereas in 2005, Vista was named one of 50 fabulous places to raise a family. In 2007, voters approved Proposition C, adopting a charter for the City of Vista. And Vista marks its 50th anniversary by celebrating its residents, businesses, volunteers, elected officials, and staff who strive to preserve and enhance the community of today while not losing sight of its community spirit and hometown beginnings. Whereas the City of Vista honors its fine efforts of its early residents and volunteers who loved their thriving community and organized a successful campaign which resulted in the incorporation in 1963, Vista will celebrate this 50th anniversary of its incorporation in 2013 with a year of fun, family activities, and special events. And whereas the City of Vista dedicated 2013, 2013, I guess I should say, as a year of community-wide celebration to honor our past, recognize our present, and embrace our future, so now therefore the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim 2013 as a year of celebration of the City of Vista's golden anniversary, and we encourage all the residents to join us in commemorating this momentous occasion. So congratulations to the City of Vista. And with that, I'm going to call up Michael Hadlin, District Director for the Office of Assemblyman Rocky Chavez, who's going to present a joint resolution from Senator Wyland and Assemblymember Chavez.
Just real briefly, we're excited to be here and honored, and we're representing Mark Wyland and Rocky Chavez. And I was reading some of this, and it's pretty exciting to see your 50th anniversary, and how smartly you've grown, not just in size, but in the way you've done it, with your chamber and your council and everybody working together. And Michael is going to read part of the proclamation.
Just wanted to read a few lines at the very end here. Whereas a visit to the City of Vista will prove to any passerby that this is a community built on the hard work and determination of a population justly proud of its community. Now therefore, be it resolved by Assemblymember Rocky J. Chavez and Senator Mark Wyland, that they take great pleasure in congratulating and commending the City of Vista upon their 50th anniversary of its incorporation, and applaud it for the outstanding contributions it has made to the history of California.
We have one, just one more here. Lena, I saw her earlier. Oh, there you are, in the front row here. Lena Wright, Field Representative for Congressman Darryl Isa will present a Congressional Recognition Certificate.
Thank you, Judy. And I'd like to add my congratulations to Mr. Solano. That's a hard act to follow. So on behalf of Congressman Darryl Isa and the 49th District, I want to say congratulations to the City of Vista, to the leaders that we have in place. You have big shoes to fill, and you've done it very well. So welcome to the two new City Council members. And the 50-year anniversary of the incorporation of the City of Vista is a great milestone. And it's my home, I love it, but I'm looking forward to the next 50 years. And I'm looking forward to the astounding things that you will do and are doing, and the good things that are to come. We do want to look forward and not look back. We've built on the history, and now it's moving forward. And my congratulations and my encouragement goes with you. And of course, I'm taking this from David Brinkley's notes back in 1971, when I was first here in Vista, and didn't stay, by the way. He said that as news anchor for NBC during a program that he wrote, as one, that the City of Vista was one of the 30 best places to live in the United States, and it still is. Congratulations. So, yes, please. On behalf of Congressman Darryl Isa, I would like to present this certificate of special Congressional recognition presented to the City of Vista, California, in recognition of the 50th anniversary of the incorporation of the City of Vista. Congratulations.
here? Come up here. Rudy is our hometown guy, and he just, he just retired from the Air Force. Come, have to come around here so everybody can see you. Have to look up there, all the people. Okay. So I'm going to read this. This is a proclamation, and he just retired recently on the 11th of January, is that right, 2013? So as, whereas in honor of Master Sergeant Rudy Moreno, is the airborne air assault non-commissioned officer in charge of Charlie Team, home to the airborne Red Horse EOD, I don't know what EOD is, what's?
Explosives.
Explosives. Readiness and fire protection. Assigned to the 820th Red Horse Squadron, Nellis Air Force Base, Nevada, Sergeant Moreno was born in Oceanside, California, on the 28th of December, 1972, and he attended Vista High School and graduated in 1991. After graduation from high school, Sergeant Moreno enlisted in the United States Air Force Delayed Enlistment Program in December of 1992. And I'm not going to read all of these things, I'm going to kind of skip through, and forgive me if I can't pronounce some of these things, because he was a lot of places. Sergeant Moreno deployed to the Middle East in support of Operation Provide Comfort and Northern Watch. During these deployments, he was instrumental in the setup of a tent city that is in Surlik, in Surlik Air Base, Turkey, for hundreds of Kurdish refugees fleeing Iraq. He was also key to construction projects and convoy operations that were crucial to the security operations conducted at Riyadh, Saudi Arabia. He also served multiple temporary duties to Colombia and Peru, maintaining assault strips used in support of counterinsurgency drug task force. Sergeant Moreno represented Howard Air Force Base and local and inter-service boxing tournaments in Panama City, Florida. He went to, he went on to win the Air Force Light Middleweight Championship at Lackland Air Force Base, Texas. He was deployed to Prince Sultan Air Base, Saudi Arabia, in support of Operation Southern Watch, and then after 9/11, he supported Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Iraqi Freedom from Manus Air Force Base, is it Kyrgyzstan?
Kyrgyzstan.
Kyrgyzstan and Doha, Qatar. In August 2003, Sergeant Moreno returned to Osan Air Force Base with the 554th Red Horse Squadron. He was crucial in the development of the first-ever air assault Red Horse Program. In 2008, Sergeant Moreno was transferred to the 820th Red Horse Squadron, Nellis Air Force Base, Nevada. And while at the 820th Red Horse Squadron, Sergeant Moreno served in the back-to-back deployments to Kandahar Airfield and Camp Leatherneck, Afghanistan. Master Sergeant Moreno's dedication and dynamic leadership boosted the capability to a full contingency operation while solidifying him as one of the founding members of the airborne air assault Red Horse Program. So the Vista City Council, we express their gratitude, says Master Sergeant Rudy Moreno, for serving our country and for defending our freedom abroad, and his admirable efforts in protecting and serving the United States of America. So the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby congratulate Master Sergeant Rudy Moreno on his retirement from the United States Air Force, and do hereby proclaim Friday, January 11, which was passed, the day he retired, as Master Sergeant Rudy Moreno Day in the City of Vista. So congratulations, and thank you so much.
This is kind of unexpected, but I'm proud to be here. I'd first like to give thanks to God, because without him, this wouldn't have been possible. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Krungovich, without you, this wouldn't have been possible, with your son Dan, who was my presiding officer, that actually retired me at my retirement ceremony. So thank you very much. And Mayor, Ms. Judy Ritter, thank you very much. City Council, thank you very much. I'm very honored. I'm a product of Vista. I grew up here. I grew up at the Boys' Club. I grew up at Rain Tree Park. You know, I'm a product of the streets, you know. Discipline, to me, it was what got me to join the military. You know, I know I needed some direction, and that was the best avenue for me to get, you know, where I wanted to be at that time. Like I tell the kids today, you know, discipline is the bridge between goals and accomplishments. Without discipline in your life, you will never achieve anything. Like I said, now that I'm retired, hey, hopefully, you know, I can get back to the community, be a mentor to the kids, and let them know that, you know, they're not alone. The kids, I know when I was growing up, all we wanted was love and support, you know. I had a roof over my head, I had, you know, food in my mouth, but I didn't have that love and support, you know, being raised from my grandmother, not even, I didn't have a mom or a dad, but just raised by my grandma. And, you know, I'm proud of that. I'm proud of that. And I want to thank you all, you know, for being here today.
Okay, with that, we are on to, around the consent calendar. And the consent calendar are items that can be, can be, oh, rather, can be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request, and we have a couple here to speak for a card to the secretary or the clerk. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So I have C5 and C6. Does anybody, any of the council want to remove any other items?
C5.
C5.
C6 is only if pulled.
Oh, okay, C6 is only if pulled. So C5 will be it. So we'll be pulling C5. So I would look for a motion for the balance of the consent calendar. Okay, a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So the next thing on our agenda will be pulling C5, and I have, okay, we're going to do a presentation first. Are you going to do it?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll be happy to do the presentation. I'll give you a brief overview of the contract for your edification and the audience's. Ever since incorporation, the City of Vista has contracted with the County Sheriff for law enforcement services. The Vista Sheriff's Captain acts as the city's police chief, and the Sheriff's Department provides a full range of enforcement services from traffic, patrol, and investigative services. The Sheriff's Department employs over 84 sworn personnel. They have administrative workers as well as 35 volunteers, sheriff's volunteers. And annually, the Vista Station responds to 35,000 calls for service from the public, as well as an additional 25,000 deputy-initiated calls, for a total of 60,000 calls. The previous five-year agreement was expired in June 2012, and negotiations for the five-year agreement began in fall of 2011. A subcommittee was formed of the nine contract cities that contract with the county for law enforcement services, and there were six cities involved in that. And the deal points for the proposed five-year agreement continue the current level of staffing and services that the cities are offered from the Sheriff's Department. But one important consideration or issue that was in the current agreement was that if the city were to make modifications to any position within the agreement, the city would not receive full credit. And the reason for that is because in the current agreement, overhead is spread among all the contract agencies. And so as an example, if we were to reduce a deputy position, we might receive 60% of the cost credit, as opposed to the full 100%. So in the new agreement, beginning in year three of the proposed five-year agreement, individual cities will no longer share the overhead cost, and rather, all those costs would come back to the cities if we were to make any changes. The proposed agreement before you operates, or implements, I should say, operational caps. So in this current first year, the amount has already been negotiated. In the second year, it would be 2.75% operational cap. The third and fourth year would be a 3% cap, and the fourth year would be a 3.25% cap. Now, that's on operational issues, which include salaries and vehicle purchases, fuel, everything else that goes into operating the sheriffs. Retirement costs are exempt from the cap. And so a conservative estimate of the annual retirement cost is right around 2.5%. In the agenda report, we put 2.5% because we were trying to be extremely conservative. But when you're looking at the county retirement costs for 20 years, it's right around 2% per year that they go up. The city's also negotiated that there will be no retirement enhancements that affect the contract cities. So if the county decides to enhance the retirement benefits, the contract cities will not be liable for that. In the former agreement, I mentioned that the contract cap was 5.5%, which was a fixed cap. The problem with that, though, is there was a clause in there that said, costs could increase above the cap if the county were to give a labor agreement that exceeded the cap. We thought this was problematic, and therefore was negotiated out. I understand this is a significant cost. It's, every city that employs law enforcement, whether they have their own police department, or whether they contract with the Sheriff's Department, this is their biggest cost in the budget. And so it's approximately 17.5 million dollars. It's significant, but it is less expensive than the alternative of forming our own municipal police department. So that's a brief overview. That concludes my report. Be happy to take any questions you have.
I have five speakers. Do you want, have any questions, or anything first, or any of the speakers?
Yep.
Okay. First speaker is Tina Gillings, and that's followed by Fred Abilas.
Hello, I'm Tina Gillings. And I'm here tonight to express my ongoing concerns regarding the behavior of the Vista Sheriff's deputies. We're all aware of the troubling history the Vista Sheriff's Department has with the Latino community in Vista. Councilwoman Rigby and Councilwoman Cody Campbell, even as new members of this council, you're aware of the relationship between Latino community and the Vista Sheriffs. At one of the forums, you were asked, you were asked, how would you, what would you do to improve the relations between the city Latino community and San Diego Sheriff's Department? You said, you would like to see more sheriff's deputies interacting with the residents at community events to help build trust. I think that continuing outreach programs that we have and additional bilingual officers, we can increase the trust with the community. The most recent incident involves a young Latino man with Down Syndrome, Antonio Martinez. He was merely walking down the street to his family's bakery, as he does every evening to clean up for the night, when he was approached by Deputy Jeffrey Guy. to clean up for the night, when he was approached by Deputy Jeffrey Guy. Jeffrey Guy thought he looked suspicious. Guy proceeded to viciously beat him with his baton. He kicked him and he pepper sprayed him. And making matters worse, when the backup deputy arrived, she pulled out her service revolver and pointed it at all the bystanders and said, ‘If you don’t get the F back, I’m going to arrest all of you.’” I don’t think that that’s what you intended for, more interaction between the Latino community and the Vista Sheriff’s Department. I know that you’re going to renew the contract with the Sheriff’s Department, but I’m asking you to supervise them. Because all in all, after it’s all said and done, at the end of the day, you’re all responsible for the safety of the community, and there are more residents that live on this side of the seventy-eight. So I’m concerned, I have an ongoing concern, and you’re their boss. They answer to you. If I have a performance evaluation every year at my place of employment, if I don’t meet the criteria, I don’t get a raise. Why are we giving them a raise? They don’t meet the criteria. They’re not servicing our community in the way that they should be. The Latino community is in fear. They are tormented and they live in fear because we cannot go outside in the evening because we look suspicious. That’s a problem. So I’m asking you to protect the community, the Latino community, and I’m also asking you, as the boss of the Vista Sheriff’s Department, to ask them, to encourage them, to release Jeffrey Guy from his position as a deputy in the city of Vista. I think he’s a detriment and a liability, and we may save costs, as Patrick said, in having the Sheriff’s Department, but the lawsuits cannot equal the cost of our own police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. This next speaker will be Fred Avilas. Maybe I’m not pronouncing his name. Is it Avelos? How about Avalos? Oh, Freddie. Oh, I didn’t see the I. Sorry, okay. She laughed, okay. Then the next speaker is John Herrera.
Good evening, esteemed council members and ladies and gentlemen. I’m John Herrera. I’m a former federal officer with the U.S. Customs Service and also a Vietnam combat veteran, retired. And I have to second what the master sergeant was saying here earlier. Self-discipline, self-discipline, self-discipline. And we not only required of ourselves, but we certainly required of those who are entrusted to protect and serve all of the community members. I’m going to give you a little history of a federal statute that deals with the color of law, and I think you’re probably aware of it, you’re probably familiar with it. But I just want to reiterate it for you so that you kind of bring it to your conscious mind. This statute gives U.S. law enforcement and other officials like the city council the authority to enforce law and to ensure justice in our country. Now, this authority includes the use of deadly force, and regrettably, we’ve seen too much of that here recently. That is why preventing abuse of this authority is equally necessary to protect our country’s democracy. And it is a federal crime for anyone acting under color of law, that is, someone who’s willfully deprives or conspires to deprive a person of a right protected by the Constitution or U.S. law, is in violation of a criminal statute. Because of the recent events in our community has experienced, we have been emotionally shaken, and especially by four elements that are specifically covered by this statute, this federal statute. The use of excessive force, including pointing a gun and cussing at witnesses at a scene, false arrest and fabrication of evidence, and failure to keep from harm a person who has been detained that might have been accused of perpetrating a crime. So not only is one not to be abused or punished, one is supposed to be protected from being harmed by the arresting officers or others. Okay? Now, Title forty-two, USC Section one-four-one-four-one makes it unlawful to allow officials to engage in patterns or practices of conduct that deprives persons of rights. Now, being a former federal officer and being a former combat veteran, I know of the stresses that these persons are under at all times. However, we have to ensure that they’re so well-trained and so well-disciplined that they do not cross the line. And thank you, Mayor. I will close it very rapidly by saying that there are remedies that we have to take into consideration when we enter into a dialogue, is that the supervision and monitoring of these officers’ actions, authentic justification for reporting uses, or reporting for uses of force against citizens, proper training of officers, which apparently seems to be quite lacking, and then processing citizens’ complaints respectfully. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John. Chuck Raible. Chuck, Chuck Raible. Chuck’s followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Chuck Raible here, Vista taxpayer. Just a couple of questions first. City manager, if you would. It appears to me from page forty-five, okay, where we outline the cost to the taxpayer of all the different members under the contract, it doesn’t delineate station staff, which has to include at least a captain. If you look at that, we’ve got sixty-seven Indians, if you will, people out on the street. And if you count the sergeants and the captain, we’ve got at least another fourteen, which leaves about twelve percent of management, if you will, for the sixty-seven Indians. The other thing I’d like to discuss is if we could turn this page into an operating statement that includes revenues, including fines and fees like the tobacco license tax, the general fund, and other revenue, and offset it, or balance it, if you will, with expenses, including the, we have an item here called whatever, but it’s a big number, and it includes, I think, the cost of the county operations center, probably doesn’t include the cost of the closed substation at Thibodeau, may or may not include the cost of the town site, other city costs like fleet maintenance and fuel. And it would be interesting to look at this contract like a business. I’m going to assume that our city manager is going to manage the contract since he made the presentation, and I would recommend that you establish some year-over-year metrics, okay, to monitor and to account for how things are going. Simple metrics, that’s all. Every business has to do it, and if you need help on what they might be, I’m certainly willing to help. With that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chuck.
Evening, Mayor, Council. A couple of points, and this is certainly not criticism. It’s observations that jump off the page if you look at the crime data for the city of Vista and compare it to the national averages, or you compare it to the cities around Vista. And I understand statistics are not the end-all, but it does have to be at least observed. Citydata.com is where I looked at some of this stuff, and the crime rate per hundred thousand is higher than the national average in 2011 and 2010 for rapes, robberies, assaults, and auto thefts. Okay? Vista, higher than the national average in crime, rapes, robberies, assaults, and auto thefts. If you look at the overall crime rate, not just those small subsets, the crime rate index is higher than all of our neighboring cities, Carlsbad, Oceanside, San Marcos. And so when you look at that, you have to ask yourself, we’re giving the Sheriff’s Department a raise, which I’m sure they’re working very hard, but something’s not working exactly the way it should be if our crime rates are higher than those around us, and they consistently are. So if you step away from the statistics that are on the paper, you ask any police academy grad, or you ask even the people in the Sheriff’s Department, “Where do I want to go to get my resume punched, my ticket punched for my resume?” They say, “I’m going to Vista because that’s where the crime is. That’s where I can really get, show what I can do.” So it’s not only that the data shows that the crimes are higher here in Vista, it’s commonly known, it’s common knowledge. Two other quick points. One of the things that I never did like about the contract is that we have a revolving door with sheriff’s captains. One and a half years, two years, we get a new sheriff’s captain. And the sheriffs will say that’s the way it has to happen, but I just don’t see how that serves the longer-term goals of Vista, they get a new sheriff’s captain every two years. And then last point, this is a ninety-million-dollar contract over, ninety or, yeah, ninety-million-dollar contract or so over five years, and it’s on the consent agenda. You know, I understand it’s easy to pull it off, but it’s kind of like if it’s on a consent agenda, it’s not even worthy of discussion. It just doesn’t make sense.
And Mayor, to answer or to comment back to Mr. Kaiser’s statements, one was on the FBI crime indexes and how Vista relates in terms of other cities in North County. And I will say that in North County itself, along the Highway seventy-eight, we’re very comparable to Escondido and to Oceanside. So from an index standpoint, we’re almost on par with that. Vista has always been a very busy station. Dating back to the seventies, Vista has been the busiest contract station there’s been within the entire county for the Sheriff’s Department. That hasn’t changed. We do have crime in our city, and the officers are very busy. And we’re fortunate with the Sheriff’s Department that we tend to get the better officers coming to Vista because they want to be active and they want to work, as opposed to some of the other contract cities that don’t have as many calls for service. In terms of the sheriff’s captain, being with the city for a year to a year and a half, it’s true, every two years, the sheriff’s captain is typically transferred out of Vista. We’ve been very fortunate in the past that we’ve had a number of captains that have promoted through the ranks of commander, assistant sheriff, as well as undersheriff. So we’ve been fortunate for that, and we have a conduit through the Sheriff’s Department. And as far as this being on the consent calendar agenda, that was my decision in hindsight. You know, maybe I would have put it on the discussion, and in five years, probably do so. In the past, it’s always been on the consent calendar agenda because we’ve contracted with the Sheriff’s Department for the past fifty years now. And so the only thing that’s changing is, you know, minor language within the agreement.
Any questions here from the council? If none, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, the only thing, I would like to comment that, you know, tonight’s discussion obviously is just on a contract, and I appreciate the speakers that came up and addressed the situation that happened a few weeks ago with the young gentleman. And it’s a very unfortunate situation, and just want to assure you that that is something that’s being looked into. Personally, I’ve asked to make sure it gets looked into. I know that the sheriff is looking into it, but I also know our city manager is also looking into it. So we don’t take this vote lightly. I’ve asked the city manager, you know, to pull this, and I know many people out here too, and I’m sure some of my colleagues have as well, so that we could have an open discussion on this contract. But overall, I’ve been very happy with what our sheriffs have done for our city. We have eighty-four deputies out there. One may have made a mistake that evening, and that’s going to be looked into, you know? But overall, I think they do a great job for us. This is a tough city. I grew up, I was born and raised here, not too far from the townsite area, where retiring Air Force Rudy Moreno was from. So I know what he’s gone through a little bit, have friends and family that have gone through that as well, very proud of that man. I know good things can come from people here in the city of Vista, but the sheriffs do have a tough job here, and I think they do a great job protecting us, and I look forward to the next five years of them continuing to do that. I make a motion that we accept this.
Do I have any other comments or a second?
I’ll second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. If there’s no other comments, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda is our public hearing. So we’ll open the public hearing, and that’s on the general plan amendment and zone change on East Vista Way. John Conley will give us a report on that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The item before you this evening is a request for a general plan amendment and rezone in the northern portion of the city off of East Vista Way. The project requests a general plan amendment from medium-high-density residential to commercial neighborhood and a zone change equivalent from residential to commercial to revert the property back to commercial designation that was established on the site before, excuse me, before the general plan was updated in February of last year. The properties that this plan change affects are located on the west side of East Vista Way, generally between Old Taylor Street and Warmlands. They’re shown on the video outlined in yellow, addresses 2002 through 2050. The properties are surrounded by residential to the northwest and east, by a church directly to the south, and by commercial uses across the street in the form of some restaurants and commercial office space to the south. There are a number of existing commercial uses that are located on the properties which are noted on the overhead. They consist of a range of different service and retail uses, including a restaurant, Aloha Animal Hospital, and Hunter’s Attic, I believe, is a furniture retailer. The project would change the general plan from medium-high-density residential to neighborhood commercial, which are shown in the overhead on the four lots that are affected. And equivalently, the zoning would change from RM fifteen, which is multi-residential of fifteen units per acre, to C-one, which is commercial retail. The reason for this change is primarily driven by the property owner’s request to be rezoned back to commercial. There was, although there was legal notice provided for the general plan changes that occurred in February, several of the property owners did not feel that the city had adequate coordination with them to discuss the proposed zoning changes, and some of them didn’t feel like they were adequately informed of it. As a result of some financing decisions that were made by those property owners, they realized that the zoning had changed and came to the city to request that it be changed back. We reviewed it, and based on the existing size of the lots and the commercial improvements that are on those lots, as well as the desire of the property owners to maintain the commercial uses on those properties, staffs in support of that request. And with that, we’re recommending that the council adopt a general plan amendment and zone change for the subject properties on East Vista Way, and that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Do I have any questions? I have two speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers first? Okay, Dr. Craig Zellus.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and council members. My name is Dr. Craig Zellus, and my business partner, Dr. John Abell, and I, as I’ve stated, are owners of Aloha Animal Hospital at 2020 East Vista Way, and I wanted to thank you for your consideration to approve an amendment of the East Vista Way general plan as it relates to rezoning of our property. And I’m thanking you on behalf of our neighboring businesses as well. I have a prepared statement that I believe is included as a correspondence exhibit on your agenda report for tonight’s meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity for me to read that statement in person, and I hope you’ll forgive me for rushing through it in an effort to keep it under three minutes, and I hope you’ll indulge me if I exceed that by a little bit. As I said, I’m Dr. Craig Zellus, and my business partner, Dr. John Abell, and I own Aloha Animal Hospital, a full-service, state-of-the-art veterinary medical facility located at 2020 East Vista Way. We pride ourselves on providing the highest quality of professional animal medical, surgical, and dental care, including but not limited to orthopedic and soft tissue surgery, gastroenterology, oncology, cardiology. oncology, cardiology, dermatology, acupuncture, dentistry, and wellness care to our pet owning clients from Vista, Oceanside, Bonn Sol, Ballbrook, Escondido, San Marcos, Carlsbad, and from as far away as Del Mar and San Diego proper. Additionally, we are the only veterinary practice in San Diego with two board-certified general practitioners on staff, and our doctors have expertise in ultrasonography, endoscopy, and, excuse me, endoscopy, which is normally only found in specialty practices outside of the city of Vista. We also serve as San Diego County Sheriff's Department Canine Units exclusive veterinarians and as the primary veterinary outsourcing facility for Oceanside's canine companions for independence. Thus, we provide a vital service to North County's pet-owning population as well as community service dogs. We created Aloha Animal Hospital in early 2000 after purchasing what was originally East Vista Pet Clinic that had been a mainstay of veterinary care for Vista since 1968, but was limited in terms of the level of medical care provided. We spent the first seven years of operations focusing on modernizing the quality of our medical building, of our medical care and building a loyal client base. There was significant business growth during that time, and by 2007, it became possible and necessary to renovate the physical plant. By mid-2009, our renovations were complete. Our remodeled facility improved the look and feel of Northern Vista entry corridor on East Vista Way, provided improved stormwater drainage, created a new paved road that was once dirt, and increased business activity in the neighborhood. We are very proud of the transformation and feel that the city of Vista can take pride in the existence of our facility as well. The aesthetic improvements of our business neighborhood as a result of our renovations is obvious, and it has added significant investment value to our business and business neighborhood. Unfortunately, the city's act to change from commercial C1 zoning of our property to multifamily residential, RM15 zoning, has essentially rendered our facility valueless from a business real estate perspective, which ultimately makes it impossible for us to receive financing for currently necessary and critical loan restructuring. This fact was brought to light this past September as our property was being appraised in the final stages of refinancing approval.
Sir, can you wrap up?
I can, yes.
Because we're kind of reading with you here, so we can read it.
Well, I'll jump ahead then. Well, I just want to say that similar dilemmas are faced by our business neighborhoods and our business neighbors, and we, I wanted to comment that we didn't, echoing what John Connolly said, is we feel like we didn't receive adequate notification on the attendant finalization of rezoning of our property, nor what actions we would need to take to contest rezoning. Had we been aware of the impending changes of our zoning, we most certainly would have formally requested to maintain our commercial C1 designation, and we implore upon the members of the City Council in their wisdom to approve an amendment of the East Vista Way general plan as it relates to our rezoning of our property back to its original designation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
So you want us to do this, right?
Yes.
You want us to do this.
Okay. Our next speaker, Brett Schausenbach.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Brett Schausenbach, the CEO of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Aloha Animal Hospital and other members that are affected by this change, and to speak in favor of the recommendation that staff is bringing forward and that the Planning Commission approved recently. And also to offer, you know, I think the issue that came into play here, which was brought up by staff, was the challenge with notifying businesses. Any of you who've ever received one of those papers in the mail that tells you that there's a public hearing coming up for the Planning Commission or the City Council, you probably read it and can dissect it easily because you're used to it, but if you think of how many receptionists don't normally get those notices and aren't cued in to be able to dissect them and understand what they are, they can easily mistake those for junk mail and toss them aside. And I think that's probably what happened here. I don't think that the city was negligent in noticing businesses because some businesses on the other side of the street did show up for a hearing when this was being discussed and voiced concern, and so their zoning was not changed. So I'm sure notice did go out, but I just think that the chamber would like to offer itself, when something of this magnitude is being discussed, as a resource to say, hey, we'd be willing to call these businesses personally and say, hey, you should come to this and at least be engaged in the discussion because it affects you. Ultimately, we're here to support what staff did, and we also feel that, from what we've seen, staff has responded well once everything came to light and how this has affected Aloha in specific. And so, we're happy with that, and we appreciate their efforts there, but we want to support this rezoning back to what it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Regalera.
Thank you, Mr. Schausenbach. Good to hear somebody come up with a solution, and if you guys are willing to help us out, I'm sure we could use the help. And I appreciate what Mr. Connolly, the efforts he's put in in getting our general plan done, and we just got that thing finalized, and now we're making an amendment. Someone else was asking me about that as well. I don't have a problem with this. I know I've been to several businesses in that area that's close to my house, and they're successful businesses. I don't see a reason to not change it back to the commercial use, so I'm supporting this.
Do you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and
Close a public hearing.
Close a public hearing and recommend the general plan amendment to that area.
Mayor Protem, no, Vice Mayor, how do we?
No.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you.
That was my idea.
I just want to congratulate staff in working closely with our business community and responding in a timely manner, and I just, I hope that the confusion that caused this didn't set the business back anyway. I hope you've been able to keep on pace with your progress, and I congratulate you for what seems to be a thriving business in an emerging area of enterprise for our city. So I second the motion, and thank you.
If I have no other speakers, I would ask you to cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And that brings us to our oral communications. And I think I had, I think I have 15 speakers, and so please, please, yeah, be nice, everyone, and keep it to your three minutes, keep it to your three minutes. And I'll start with Charles Witt, followed by Jeanne Wilson. And you know what? We all kind of, we all know kind of what your, what your subject is, so maybe if you don't like this, maybe you could give us your idea of how we can raise money other than this. How about that?
Good evening, Councilmembers.
Speaker, yeah, speak right in the microphone, please.
Councilmembers, my name is Charles Witt, taxpayer, resident of Shadow Ridge, and I speak in opposition to the so-called digital message boards, issue that came up at the previous meeting. Self-illuminated billboards, euphemistically called digital message boards, are a common sight in Las Vegas, Reno, Carson, and city of industry, but are never seen in Carmel, Malibu, Beverly Hills, or Palo Alto. Such billboards thus provide visitors with a vivid shorthand manifestation of the type of city they are visiting. It could be surmised that, with an eye to perceptions, the Vista City Council would not embrace such signage were it not for the prospect of additional revenue. The last meeting agenda report, January 8th, speculates that $300,000 to $400,000 of additional annual city revenue could be obtained from two illuminated flashing billboards alongside Highway 78. However, there is no minimum guaranteed income from the service provider, and as the report indicates, there will inevitably be other such signs on this corridor. So the relative advertising value of these particular signs and the related income will probably decline with time. The report says the sign usage proposed to advance "community interests" in quotes and "support local businesses" in quotes is limited to no more than 25% of the content rather than at least some minimum amount of content. Unless that commitment is reversed, the statements in the plan are meaningless. Furthermore, rather than supporting local businesses, the billboards are likely to draw business away from Vista. There will be no control over the type of messages displayed. Regardless of the city's intentions or expectations at the outset, the threat of litigation will ensure equal access to even the most flagrantly egregious advertising. The maximum expected revenue from the two billboards won't even fully offset the annual city subsidy to the Wave Waterport, Water Park, and will leave a very large subsidy demand from the General Fund for Other Services. The question arises as to how the budget could be changed so that the city's expenditures would not chronically exceed its revenues. Examining the online published operating budget, one can see great detail down to the minutia of the cost for business cards in 35% of the budget, but no corresponding detail for the 65% of the budget for public safety. With all due respect to the good work done by Mr. Hammond's staff, I request that the Council carefully consider the foregoing points before embarking on this aesthetic compromise in the hope of additional revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeanne Wilson, followed by Jean Ford.
Hello, Mayor Ritter and Councilmembers and public. My name is Jeanne Wilson, and I'm a resident of the Shadow Ridge Panorama area, and I am going on record tonight as another person opposed to the digital message boards, for safety reasons, number one. I think they're very distracting, and along 78, there's enough confusion and plenty of accidents that happen just trying to drive without flashing things along the sides of the roads. So I think it's very distracting and can be a safety hazard in terms of aesthetics. Again, if I wanted to live near Las Vegas with all of these flashing things that are advertised, I would have bought there. It was interesting tonight that in some of the earlier presentations, they said that Vista was one of the 30 best places in the United States to live and raise a family. And I think by putting these types of billboards or digital message boards doesn't give the feeling of wanting to live here and raise a family. It, to me, right away, brought to mind Vegas. So I'm opposed to it. I think it's tacky. Aesthetic-wise, I'm opposed to it. So I just want to go on record as saying, I don't like it.
Thank you. Jean Ford, followed by Mike Woods.
We live in an era where information passes so fast, you can almost hardly watch it happen. I happened to clip a piece out of the paper on January the 17th that I thought was important, and I had made copies of it for the City Council. I'd like to leave them up here. And for the benefit of the audience tonight, the organization that I have understood was working with the city to put together a package of services and design and distribution of electronic billboards. What I'm passing out here is a clipping from the Los Angeles Times that says CBS is abandoning the billboard business. They're not going to be making any more billboards in domestic United States or even overseas.
Jeanne, you need to talk to us.
Sorry. They intend to take the European and the Asian market that they already have and sell it. They intend to take the domestic market, which I take for granted as the kind of candidate United States, perhaps South American market, and convert it into a real estate investment trust. Now, I believe that the press release by CBS that they are getting out of this sign business signals a need for a number of questions to be asked and answered, such as if the contract with Vista ends up in a real estate investment trust, are the obligations of CBS to manage and maintain the billboards transfer to another entity? Can Vista buy out the interest of CBS? And who then controls the content control? There's a dozen other questions that go along there, and I'm, let you think about them over. How many of these is new to you? Or did you all know about this happening? Okay. As to solving the need for revenue, which is really at the heart of the issue, based on my conversations with other residents of Vista, I have heard several suggestions on how to increase income, and I have not been able to dismiss them as not practical. This surprised me. I recommend a joint meeting of city officials with those who have ideas that may help to solve the financial needs of the city. I hope this should happen soon.
I need you to wrap up. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jeanne. Mike Woods, followed by Henry Bronstein. Mike Woods first, and then followed by Henry Bronstein. Mike Woods first.
Thank you, Mayor Ritter, Councilpeople. I'm a resident of Vista. A couple of years ago, my wife and I moved to the community because we were entranced with the quality of life we saw here, the atmosphere, the cultural activities that are offered in the city, the feel of the community, and the look. As a result, I am personally opposed to the digital signs because I think those signs will impact negatively the feel of the community. At the same time, I recognize that in the present economic environment, budgets are shrinking, particularly when the state of California wants to balance their budget by making it a little harder for you to balance yours, REIT development funds. And I also recognize that this particular project, the digital signs, offer a lot of financial incentive, possible generation of revenue, attracting commerce to the city, zero or very little cost to the city for upfront. And the potential, and I think this is critically important for the atmosphere of the community, the reduced potential of loss of money to other civic activities that create a quality of life, i.e. the Moonlight Theater offering. I offer two items for the Council's consideration. First of all, locate these signs in areas that are not contiguous with residential communities. We have corridors along the 78 that are business, and I recognize that there could be a financial consideration, private property versus public property, but I offered that item for your consideration. And secondly, and I think this is the most important item, and one that I would encourage staff to consider investigating and reporting to the Council. In the information that I got, four cities in the state of California have these digital signs, other than those mentioned in our neighboring state of Nevada. And have we looked at the revenue generated by those cities as a result of those signs, both short-term and long-term, and what has been the overall quality of life impact of those signs on the community? In closing, while I'm extremely leery on reducing the attractive atmosphere of our city, I have to recognize the fiscal realities of weighing want versus need. We must guard against the potential of business advertising becoming, as so eloquently put by the young lady, garish and trashy in our community. I urge the Council to consider this item's impact on the broader community, not just the financial revenue generation aspect of it.
Thank you, sir. Henry Bronstein, followed by Ken Leon.
Mayor Ritter, Councilmembers, and staff, I've lived in Vista for the past 29 years.
Speak right in your microphone.
I have lived in the city of Vista for the past 29 years. I love this city. I, like many civic-minded citizens, do not approve of the proposed electronic billboards to be placed on Highway 78 in the city of Vista. Please vote against them. There have been numerous valid arguments given orally and via email protesting their construction. Your constituents do not want them. We voted you in office thinking you would carry out our wishes. We voted you in office thinking you would carry out our wishes, and placing of these billboards is very much against our wishes. We should all be aware that the three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars the city expects to receive annually, as their percentage of fees collected is only an estimate by staff and may never be realized. Also, before the city would receive any of the proceeds from advertising fees collected, the costs for the designing, materials, constructions, erecting, operating, these billboards must be paid for from the advertising fees collected. When these costs, what these costs shall be and how long it will take to pay for them is an unknown. Therefore, as presented by CBS Outdoor, the developer, the city will not know how much or when they shall receive any financial benefits from these signs. Just a little more. Those councilmembers presently in favor should think twice and search their conscience before voting for this proposal. Should you make the error of approving these billboards, which shall contain electronic moving advertising announcements twenty-four-seven, I suggest the proposal as presented by the city staff should contain the following provisions. The city to lease the land to the developer for an annual rent of three hundred thousand dollars plus receive a percentage of the income the signs produce. Structured in this manner, the city is guaranteed of a known income and when they shall receive that income. It will still remain a sweet profitable deal for the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ken Leon followed by Marilyn Freitag.
Thank you, Mayor. City councilmembers, city manager. For the record, I am Kenneth Leon, a Vista resident, property owner, homeowners board member, and voter. I stand here to oppose the digital billboards proposal. In my boardwork as president of Shadow Ridge Owners Association, you and I meet regularly to discuss matters of common interest to voters in Shadow Ridge and Vista. I value that professional relationship. I am disappointed that you failed to share this proposal earlier on or at all in our regular meetings. You should not lead Vista from within a council bubble. I served thirty-one years on active duty as a naval officer. I accept responsibility for what I say and do. I have to ask, where is the requisite critical thinking, decision-making, voter engagement, and hard-nosed negotiations so needed in this plan for digital billboards? I just don't see it. The proposal set before us at the January eighth city council meeting is abhorrent to me. My wife Toby and I left Temecula some years back to avoid increased highway risk, increased roadway distraction, and increased visual blight on I-15 going through Temecula and Murrieta. We know what that looks like and feels. It did not exist when we moved here to Vista. We prefer to keep it that way. Following questions deserve formal responses, and here I'm describing what my perception of your process thus far has been. Why did you develop this proposal largely outside of public view, my perception? Why did you bypass the Vista Planning Commission? Why did you modify your own ordinance, which prohibits digital billboards, with an amendment that permits government-owned signs on city property expressly to enable this particular proposal? Why did you not organize? And why are you not organizing now a citizens' task force to shape proposals like this from the outset? How can you claim responsibility and due diligence for providing the city's essential services while avoiding accountability with internal and external review? Vista residents stand ready to participate in a task force to identify the alternatives you seek.
I need you to wrap up.
You should act decisively to create that task force. Each of you risks being remembered on the wrong side of history for the next twenty-five years with this decision. Sign me up now, sign others up now, and delay your decision on digital billboards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Marilyn Freitag followed by Toby Leon.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Marilyn Freitag and I'm a new member of the Vista community. And we've not, we've been here about a year and it took us three years to make a decision on where we wanted to go to begin our retirement. And Vista was the perfect place, we thought. Because it doesn't have any of the electronic billboards or the flashiness, it was a community that we definitely wanted to be a part of. I feel that with the billboards coming in, it's not, it's just going to be a negative distraction. And so I want to just let you know that I'm not in favor of it. And also that perhaps there can be some kind of a workshop or that residents who are truly interested could help in making, in finding ways to make money, to bring money to the council instead of this kind of thing.
Thank you. Thank you. Toby Leon followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Hello, Mayor Ritter, councilmembers. I too would like to go on record as being opposed to digital signs on many, many counts, mostly the change it brings to the community. It's kind of ironic that tonight we had the fifty-year presentation and, you know, everybody talked about what a great city and a great environment had been created here in the previous fifty years. And now you're going to take half of that period of time and blight it with ugly billboards on Seventy-Eight that says, Vista's tacky, Vista's tacky. It's just beyond my comprehension that this would be in your plan, particularly, Judy, because you worked so hard to have everything else in Vista done so well in the past. And I do think, as I've heard so often tonight, that if you let the citizens come up with ideas, if you had a workshop or a task force or any other thing, I've heard lots of people in my conversations, people who are too afraid to come and talk, but have expressed their opinion of how awful it's going to be. And they have come up with other ideas for revenue and much more revenue than you're getting from this. To sell ourselves so cheap is really a shame. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, tell them to send me the ideas. I'm open. Send them to me. Stephanie Jackel followed by Nikki Hobson.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and members of the council. My name is Stephanie Jackel and I live in Vista. You each and city manager Patrick Johnson have graciously replied to emails from me and a number of other people about the billboards. Thank you very much for your responses. You know then, the aesthetic reasons I feel the electronic billboards are so very wrong for our community, and I won't repeat those tonight. This evening, I would like to note that Mayor Ritter, in fact, in this meeting, Councilman Equilera and Councilman Coles have each told me and others, you would like to hear suggestions for other sources of revenue to replace that from the billboards. I'd like to ask you very seriously, implore you, to make this happen. Set up a citizen-city workshop or an organized occasion to sit down around a table for conversations, not just send me a statement. There are Vistans who do have revenue source ideas. Let us talk with you about them. There are also many, many questions we have about the billboards. Give us a chance to discuss those with you. This can't be hit or miss, send me an email. It should be an organized occasion for sharing information and questions and conversations. The future of Vista, its visual and its monetary future, is too important not to take this seriously. We hope you will let us into this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Nikki Hobson followed by Carolyn Chesizer.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Nikki Hobson and I live in Vista. I've lived here for twenty-two years and I love it. I want to tell you, though, that there are so many things wrong with this proposal for electronic billboards that I don't even know where to begin. They're a safety hazard and they will cause accidents. They are a source of visual blight that will go on for decades. They'll change the fundamental character of Vista, and Vistans don't like that. They'll expose the city to both known and unknown financial risks. The revenue promised the city by the billboard company is minimal and not guaranteed. And even if you love billboards, you just have to admit, this is a bad business deal for the city. I think you need to rethink that. All you need to do is think of charger, when cities negotiate with big corporations, they usually lose, and I can point to a couple of examples. Think charger, ticket guarantees, and highway school bonds, just two good examples of how cities have lost in their negotiations. I'm just asking the city to please slow down and really consider the consequences of what you're thinking of doing. Specifically, I too recommend that you set up a task force or a working group made up of city staff and public members who are interested in this issue, to do a thorough study of both the billboard issues and to suggest other possible sources of revenue to get us over the financial shortfall that we're facing. Believe it or not, there are a lot of good people in Vista who, if given a chance, can come up with some good ideas and are willing to work hard to solve this problem without putting a permanent scar on our beautiful city. So please, slow down. Let us participate and be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn, followed by John Eric Nilson.
Thank you, Mayor Ritter and council, for giving us another opportunity to speak on this subject tonight. I was initially against this idea of digital signs for aesthetic reasons, but the more investigation we have done, the worse the picture gets. Again, I urge you not to enter into this contract hastily. We have uncovered so much negative information in the last few weeks and so many questions have arisen that it behooves everyone to ask all the right questions and be very wary of big sign companies. Their goal is not to help Vista solve their revenue problem, but to make money, sell their company, per the article in the L.A. Times, and make more money. There are legal issues, aesthetic issues, property value issues, and the list goes on. In the long run, some or all of these can cost the city more money. I implore you to please give serious consideration to a city resident committee to dig deeper into the facts of this project and shine a light on the pitfalls. You need all the information on the table before you can make a decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Eric Nilson followed by Linda Thompson.
I think I should probably have been speaking in a different section.
You just speak right into the microphone, please.
I probably should have been speaking in a different section with Ms. Jillings and her.
It's okay. You can speak on whatever you want.
Okay. I'm John Eric Nilson. I've lived in Vista for fifteen years. And almost instantly, when we were, when we came here, we were totally shocked at the level of police brutality in San Diego area and by the deputies here in Vista in particular. In many cases, there have always been internal investigations on what's going on, and it goes on and on, and then it pretty soon runs into the sand and the deputies are exonerated. Now, the latest incident of a deputy severely beating a mentally handicapped guy, a Latino man, a young Latino man who was walking to his family business, he was walking on the And for some reason, the deputy saw fit to start beating him right there. And he had to take him to the hospital. Now, I haven't heard any official word from, from the city or any city officials. I don't know if you have. But anyway, it's been a month now. A month has passed and nothing has occurred. And I'm sure that if I or somebody else asked, then I would get the answer that we can't comment on an ongoing investigation. Well, in some cases, when months have passed and then you ask about the investigation and they say, well, there wasn't any, we didn't do any investigation. Now that you're about to renew the contract, or have you already done it, with the Sheriff's Department, you should put in some kind of clause that, that you can have some demand on what type of people you get. Somebody has to have a little empathy with the Latino community in particular. Now, all the people that have been beaten, they have been on color. I have no, I have never seen a white man, a guy with blue eyes like me or pale skin, been beaten or mishandled. In two thousand and five, I was not here at that time.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay, yeah. So, please, for once and for all, at least you should stop the practice of letting deputies shoot unarmed people in the back. That's not policing. It's murder.
Thank you, sir. Linda Thompson followed by Acelia Tagdeary. Linda Thompson? Just maybe we're going to lower the podium for you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Thompson and I'm a longtime resident of Vista. And it's, you can well see, I have a disability. But many citizens of Vista and community have disabilities that are unseen or aren't very evident upon looking at the person. People have epilepsy, which is seizure disorders. People have hearing impairments that you don't notice on first sight. I don't believe this is a disability issue about the officer. I think he made a snap judgment on something he thought was real. And he thought he had a suspect. Unfortunately, the man had dementia and his response was out of fear, not because he didn't want to comply with the officer. So... So there's really a need to have officers trained to not make snap judgments, because there are people who have disabilities that don't show them, and a snap judgment can lead to something very harmful, as it did for this poor guy down there. I really request that you look at training. The officer's honest matters. I've spent a lifetime doing disability awareness training for people who need to know, such as professionals. And I really would like to stress that this probably needs to be done more for our law enforcement officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
And on a different subject matter, good evening. The Vista-Bahai Community invites you and the public to a screening of the documentary titled "Education Under Fire," to be held at the Vista Library on Saturday, February 2nd. Did you know the Bahais in Iran are not permitted to attend university in their own country simply because of their religious beliefs? Students are denied education. Teachers are imprisoned. School books banned. Students under surveillance only because of their religion. Education Under Fire is a nationwide movement organized to bring attention to this serious human rights violation. On January 1st, 2013, the United States Congress passed a resolution condemning the government of Iran for such vicious actions. Our neighboring communities, including Oceanside, Carlsbad, and Sanitas and Escondido, have all hosted this screening, and now it is time for the citizens of Vista to come together. Thank you, Vista City Council, for your attention to this matter, and we look forward to seeing you all on February 2nd.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council staff. First off, based on the proclamation today, we need to remind everybody that next Monday, right here in this building, we're having the State of the City and celebrating our 50th birthday. And for those of you in the audience that aren't aware, check in with the Chamber of Commerce. They're looking for your check and we hope to see you here. Thank you. I know you guys read the local paper and Rusty Harris in the UT North County Times Edition had a great article reminding you all that with this sign, electronic billboards, we're only talking about one-half or 1% of the general budget. Okay, what do we do? Well, we look at the cost side of the city. I know we can save that much real quick by privatizing, contracting out the motor pool out there on East Vista Way. Vistix, without a doubt, let the Chamber and let VVBA bid on operating Vistix. It doesn't, it's not rocket science. And let me close with saying, on Saturday, I had a meeting down in El Cajon. Went all the way down to El Cajon and came back eight and then up five and 78. The only billboards I saw, there were some in Mission Valley I missed, but in El Cajon, where they have billboards, it's all about casinos. And in Oceanside, where they have billboards, it's all about casinos. And unfortunately, in California, we've got two classes in category of citizens. I won't argue with that. The Indians are more equal than we are, and they can have casinos. But nonetheless, I don't think it's a, something that Vista wants to put along the freeway. Thank you.
Clarence Johnson. Clarence?
Mayor Ritter, councilmembers, I apologize for coming in late, but I was in the middle of baking a lemon pound cake, and you know, if you don't get it right, it's not going to come out right.
And you didn't bring us any?
Well, I meant to bring my timer, so I make sure that I got my full three minutes.
Watch the green light down there.
But I ran out of the house and I forgot the timer.
I'd rather have the cake.
Okay, so I'm going to do it quickly.
Okay.
I'm in opposition. The last time I was here, they were trying to shut lights out. Yeah, we wanted to shut all the lights out in Shadow Ridge. This time, they want to light it up, but they're lighting it up in the wrong direction. That is the worst hazard that we could have in the Vista area, a Las Vegas Strip, and that's what it's going to look like. We do not need it. If you drive 78 between four and six, you can see it's a disaster. And can you imagine people slowing down, trying to see what's on that sign and read what's on that sign, what is going to happen? I know the city needs revenue. I'm all for getting revenue, but let's get it in a sensible way. This is not sensible. You're changing the architect of a beautiful little city. And we have enough big box stores and signs and In-N-Out places, so let's try and review this. Let's turn this down. The next time I come up here, I can hope I can come up and say I'm for something, but I'm in opposition to this whole heart thing, and I hope you will be too.
Thank you, sir. Okay, well, that leads us to, that's all of oral communications, and you know, because nothing's agenda is that we can't respond to anything, so that's, but, but I am willing to do a workshop and listen to people. I don't want to talk about digital signs, but I'm willing to listen to people's ideas on how we can raise money. If we could do like a tight agenda and, and say, no, no, no words about digital signs are allowed at this workshop, but let's hear ideas that you could come up with. I'm willing to do that. So I will talk to the city if my councilmembers are agreeable to that. Councilmember Coles?
Yeah, I agree with that, and I've responded to a number of emails where people have suggested that we have a community opportunity to suggest funding alternatives. And I, and I'm willing to, to listen and hopefully hear some ideas. I've asked for some hints of what these ideas might be. I haven't heard anything yet, but maybe they're saving the best for, for some kind of a meeting where we could do that. But again, I'd like to see it as a fairly tight agenda where we didn't just have people coming out with, you know, messages of opposition, but some solutions for us. And I'm very open and welcome, you know. Like everybody else, I love Vista. I've been involved in all parts of Vista throughout my career here and my time on the council, and, and I'm, I listen to a lot of people with a lot of points of view on how we can publicize our city the best way we can publicize it. And if there are other options that would generate the, the level of income we're talking about here, I'm extremely happy to listen to it, not just places to cut the budget. We've already cut the budget to ribbons, so don't come up with an idea, we can slash this, cut that, move the carpool. I want new revenue generation ideas, and I would be...
And that would be the subject.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, yes, I agree with the, the idea of a workshop, and I want to say thank you to the community for coming out again this evening, although it wasn't on the agenda, and we can't speak directly to any of the issues that were brought forward. I personally appreciate very much hearing what you have to say and receiving your emails and your telephone calls and your Facebook messages, so please keep it coming, and I would look forward to seeing you all at a workshop that we schedule in the future.
Councilmember Aguilera.
I'm always up for new ideas, so I appreciate it. I appreciate the people coming out tonight, but would appreciate them showing up at the workshop so that we can talk face-to-face about these new ideas. I'm for it.
So we'll make it, if we do a workshop, we'll do, do a tight agenda, so I, and I, it's like no billboard talk allowed, how about that? And then we'll come up with new ideas for, for money, that would be, for how we can generate money. But you know what, you have good comments tonight, and so, and I appreciate that. I've lived in Vista since 1971 for over 40 years, and I've been, worked on the downtown since 1981. I bought a building down there, and I saw hope for our downtown when some people didn't see any hope down there. And so, I mean, I worked on that for a long time, and I've worked on this city for a long time. I love Vista, and so, I, you know, I'm open to any ideas you can give us. I mean, you know, the state took money away from us, so we're having a struggle just paying our everyday, we can do it if we dip into our reserves, but you know, like your own budget, when you dip into your savings so long, then you don't have any after a while. So we have to, we have to balance our budget, and we, and so that's what it's all about. So if we can do a workshop and you can bring ideas to us for generating revenue, how the city can do that, then we're open to that. So, yes.
Madam Mayor, in, in connection to that, as I've listened, and I, believe me, I'm listening carefully and as objectively as I can to everything, but there are many misconceptions that have been expressed tonight about the proposal, the agreement, the signage, how, and it would be nice if somebody on staff could kind of encapsulate some of those items that seem to be a little ambiguous or misconstrued, at least to my understanding, and give us something that we could share with, with people. There are at least one or two people who just wanted more complete information about some of the things that could potentially be wrong, and, and I agree. We don't want any, you know, mistakes or any errors in, in how this goes forward, and, and I would not support it if I felt that, that some of these misconceptions are, are accurate. So is that possible to get maybe some, some summaries of that?
Yeah. Councilmember Coles, we're currently working with CBS right now, looking at issues that were addressed, such as content thresholds for minimum amounts of revenue, the term, as well as covering ourselves for any liability issues. I know that was a big concern from a lot of the emails that came in, that if we were sued, there would be a hold harmless agreement in place so that the city is covered there. So there's a number of things that we're currently working on that aren't done deals, that aren't, at least at the staff level, finalized. I don't know if you'd like anything else tonight, but we can certainly put something together in the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay, with that, we move on to our remarks, and so, let's see, shall I start down the other end? Okay, John's pointing like down there. Okay. Councilmember Rigby.
Yes, thank you. I had a great week, this past week, in Sacramento with Councilmember Campbell and City Manager Patrick Johnson at the League of California Cities, and it was very informative and it was very inspiring for me to see some of the city people here in Vista at work, as well as meet some of our counterparts throughout North County, as well as the rest of the San Diego region that we'll be working with in the future. So I just want to say thank you to Patrick, our city manager, and the city staff for helping facilitate that, and to Cody. It was a really great workshop, I think. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Coles, I was looking for the word.
Yeah, go out in front. Yeah, it's been a busy two weeks since our last meeting. I've, I've got my email fingers working pretty, pretty handily, and, and I've been grateful for the warmer weather that's upon us. I had, I was newly appointed as one of the directors for the Encina wastewater plant in Carlsbad, and had an opportunity to go to an orientation there last week, and was absolutely astonished at what happens to the wastewater from virtually all of North County that, you know, goes through the lines over there to the coast, coastal plant in Carlsbad, and how that facility has turned a loss into a profit through some very ingenious processing of, of waste. And what used to cost several million dollars a year to dispose of some of the solid waste is now making more than that in the sale of, of a product that is really interesting. So I, I look forward to my service on that board and for the other boards that I'm able to serve on. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
I'd just like to echo Councilmember Rigby's remarks. Had a very informative event in Sacramento with the League of California Cities, and thank City Manager Johnson for participating in that with us, and I look forward to the coming months with the issues with the billboard signs and hopefully the workshop with the revenue generation ideas that residents of Vista can bring forward to the city. So, thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too have been, or I've also had a very busy couple of weeks, you know, answering emails and haven't got back to all of them, actually, so I'm a little tardy in that, and I apologize. But one of the things I want to report back on is I've been working with North County Transit District. I'm one of the new board members there, and there's a topic that's very important to North County. All the North County cities that, Los Angeles, Orange County, they're trying to push, push to take over all of the rail lines and have all of the agencies, which would be North County Transit District, to start servicing those rail lines and getting basically state funds and place of that. North County Transit District has taken a pretty strong position against this, feeling that it may cost the cities, meaning Vista, San Marcos, Carlsbad, all the North County cities, Oceanside, could potentially cost us more money. So once we take it over and want to service those rail lines, when costs go up and state funds start to run out, as they might, who's going to pay the bill? Right now, the state is actually, and the federal government is responsible for servicing those lines, and we, we really feel that that's probably the best course of action, let them take the risk. And so anyways, it's just been very interesting. Certainly hasn't been determined one way or the other. We're trying to get San Diego to step in, MTS, and stand, stand behind us as well as Sandag, so hopefully the mayor and the other mayors will support us. I know all of the other mayors here in North County seem to be on board, and I know our mayor would be as well, and really just looking to protect our dollars, Vista dollars, as well as the other North County cities. So that's what's going on at North County Transit District.
Yeah, because the state, actually, we've talked about that down at Sandag, and the state actually gives it money now, but, I mean, just like our redevelopment money, the state can take, you know, say, yeah, here it is for you now, and next year, do it on your own. So, yeah, it, we, Sandag has taken a, a stance against that, so, actually, and actually, I'm going to be serving as the vice chair of the Transportation Committee next year, so that'll be an interesting thing, yeah. Anyway, I have a couple of announcements here. The Spring Leadership Academy begins February 27th. The Vista Leadership Academy, it's a seven-week program, held on consecutive Wednesday evenings with the exception of one lunchtime citywide tour on March the 6th. And if you haven't taken this, it's so interesting that the Leadership Academy is. It's designed to give residents and insiders view of their city government, and it, you know, visits the jail and it visits Public Works, and it's so interesting. No prior knowledge of the city is required, and the class is free. The Spring Academy runs February 27th through April 10th, and that's on the Wednesdays. Information and application are on the website. Information about the commission and committee vacancies are posted on the city clerk's webpage. There's applications for unscheduled vacancies. There's one on the sales tax over... There's one on the sales tax oversight committee, and there's one on Parks and the Recreation Commission. Those are due by 5:30 p.m. tomorrow. Applications for annual vacancies, and the number of vacancies always varies by commission, are due February 25th for incumbents and March 25th for all other applicants. And one other announcement, the next Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, training session begins April 3rd and runs through May 22nd. In the event of a major disaster, the CERT volunteers know how to take lifesaving action to help their families, neighbors, businesses, and communities get the first few hours or days when an emergency services are overwhelmed. They help get through that. So, more information is available on the fire department's webpage. And I always want to take that CERT training, but I never--it seems like I always have things that I can't do. I would miss several things. So, anyway, those are my comments. City manager?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Wanted to let everybody know that the San Diego Humane Society is holding a pet licensing event on Saturday, January 26th, at the Wabba Water Park parking lot. So, if you're interested in more information, you can go to the San Diego Humane Society's website at sdhumane.org or by calling 760-730-8850. And I want to say it was a pleasure to attend the new councilmembers' academy with councilmembers Campbell and Rigby. I think it was very productive, so thank you for attending, and I'm looking forward to the State of the Community luncheon kicking off our 50th anniversary on Monday.
Yeah, that's right. Gosh, our city attorney hasn't said anything all night tonight.
It's been a wonderful evening. Thank you, Mayor, and I look forward to seeing everyone at the luncheon next Monday.
Mayor, I have one last thing.
Thank you.
One thing I forgot. All the Little Leagues in town are having their signups this weekend, past weekend, so if you have kids, grandkids, I believe soccer and softball is probably having their signups as well, so if you know kids, kids in the neighborhood, kids that need to have something to do, keep them busy, this is a good weekend. Find a sport for them to play. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, and they asked me to throw out the first pitch at the Little Leagues. Last year, I didn't do so good. I'm going to practice. Yeah, I have to be a good catcher to catch my balls. Okay, with that, I guess if there's no other comments, we're adjourned. At what time? 7:27. Thank you for coming tonight.